Regular scheduled board meeting, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bultis.
Here.
Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Here.
President Colleton.
Here. And if we could all please stand for the pledge. Carol Davis, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could all remain standing. If we could please take a moment of silence. Bill Mueller, Mayor of Lombard, is right now in the hospital, and I would please ask for prayers and condolences for his family and to wish him a recovery, a speedy recovery. So if we could take a moment of silence, please. All right, with that, we will go to approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bultis.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board on the approval of the agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bultis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Now we go to presentation of the Business Beautification Awards by the Pride Commission, and I will let Diane and her crew all take over.
Good evening. We always love to give out awards. This year, you may notice, we haven't done residential landscaping anymore. Our apologies. That should be coming in a month or so, but the drought put us a little behind on the plans, because everybody's plans just kept kind of, you know, going. But we have a lot of exciting things going on with the Pride Commission. A couple events I'd like to pitch before we give out the awards. Coming up on September 8th at the gazebo, we will be having an event called Pause on the Path, which is an event we do with animal rescues, and you can come and play with puppies and adopt a pet. And we also collect food for dogs for the local food shelter, so we do have a collection for that. And we're adding a new item this year. This fall, we are going to be doing Halloween decorating awards. We have so many people in town who do some really wonderful decorating for Halloween that this year, we thought, wouldn't it be neat to recognize some of these really greatly decorated houses for Halloween? So encourage your friends to decorate, send in nominations when you see some cool houses, and we'll be doing that in the fall. We have more events, we'll talk about those later. But tonight, we are doing the Business Beautification Awards. Every year around this time of year, what we do is we like to look around town and see what local businesses have done to improve their buildings, the areas, things like improving their facades, expanding their facilities, landscaping, and things like that. There were a lot of really great businesses to choose from this year, but we have narrowed it down to three winners for this year. We'll keep some of the other ones in mind for next year. We have several commissioners here this evening. Alicia Bailey is going to present the awards, along with her beautiful assistant, Junior Commissioner Shannon. And Carol Davis, another one of our commissioners, is here as well, and we have a new commissioner being added right after this, so I'll let the girls go to it.
Inhale.
Oh, inhale. Sitting there on the floor.
Well, this is one of the most anticipated businesses for quite a while. It is a gorgeous building, it's going to really enhance the North Avenue corridor, and we would like to recognize Frank 234 Tavern.
At least give the address.
105 East North.
105 East North Avenue. If you don't know, it's the off-track bedding facility and restaurant. So if you haven't been there, it's a wonderful place to go. Beautiful, beautiful courtyard, wonderful food, great service. So please, stop in and check out all the hard work that was put into doing this.
And easier to get to now that the armpit and the bridge is on.
The next business has done such a wonderful job, started out with a little bit smaller building, and started to add and add and add, and made just a gorgeous, beautiful bridal store here in Villa Park. So we'd like to recognize the folks from Royal Bridal. Oh, it's just beautiful. That is a bridal show there, though.
And the address is?
621 East St. Charles Road.
621 East St. Charles Road. So if you're a bride out there, check it out. They've got gorgeous dresses, beautiful bargains, wonderful service. So please, you know, visit, visit our local businesses. They and we all appreciate the support. And the last one, again, is a wonderful new addition. Instead of the Taco Bell I saw that we saw for many years, we had a wonderful business move into town. It's RC's Breakfast Grill. They're open 24 hours. My husband loves to go there because they have awesome Mexican breakfast. And I've eaten there a few times myself, and I say that it's a great place to go. So if you're looking for someplace to sit down, have a great lunch, breakfast, late-night snack, RC's Grill. The address is on St. Charles Road. So we will deliver this to them, they could not make it today. But thank you to all of you business owners here in Villa Park who really take pride in, you know, our town and your business, and we really appreciate that you're here. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much to our community pride, and thank you to all those great businesses here in town. Not only beautification, but we appreciate all of you being here, and we truly, truly wish we're going to make you successful no matter what. And that's dedication from also Alicia, who happens to be the Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce. So it helps with Business Beautification Awards. She pretty much knows every business in town as well. With that, we will go to B, appointments to commissions. One, Shannon Strom, Community Pride Junior Member. Two, Jackie Brown, Environmental Concerns Commission. Three, Michael Spencer, Environmental Concerns Commission. Four, Julia Delberti, Historical Preservation Commission. Five, John Brett, Traffic and Safety Commission. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I move to approve the appointments.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bultis.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Bultis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes, and any of you who are happy to be with us tonight, we thank you for coming here, but we'll have you come right up to the podium, and the clerk will swear you all in right now.
Yes, except for Shannon Strom, who I will...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
...who I will wait till the end, and you will have an agreement that you'll agree to for your commission position.
Raise your right hand, please, and then after you say "I," each one of you say your name separately.
Okay.
And then continue repeating after me. At the very end, I'm going to let you say your commission again separately, so it will be done together, but you'll have, you know, identity by yourself. Okay, "I."
I, John Brett.
Jackie Brown.
Michael Spencer, John Brett.
Julia Delberti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
And to faithfully perform the duties.
As a member of.
As a member of the Environmental Concern Commission.
Environmental Concerns Commission.
Traffic and Safety Commission.
Historical Preservation Commission.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
See, that was pretty painless, right?
Shannon, you don't have to raise your right hand, you just have to agree to this. Okay, as a junior commissioner, do you agree to attend the commission meetings as often as you can, and faithfully take on the various responsibilities that may be given to you by the commission or the commission chairperson?
I agree.
Congratulations.
All right, well, thank you all very much, and thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come and be sworn in and not have Hosanna chase you down, because that's what you will find from commission members, if they don't show up here, she calls you and hunts you down to get you to swear in, all right?
Usually.
Excellent. With that, we will go to Item 5, Public Comments on Agenda Items. If there is anyone, that would be Item 6, 7, and 8. If you have something to speak on on the Committee of the Whole, that is a separate part of the meeting, and each item on the Committee of the Whole will be taken individually, and there will be opportunity to speak in each one of those. And if you have something that's not on that agenda or the Committee of the Whole agenda, number 15 is Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. So now would be the time to speak on agenda items. And seeing none, we will go to Item 6, Consent Agenda. A, minutes for Village Board Meeting for July 23rd, 2012. B, minutes for Village COW for July 23rd, 2012. C, approved bill listing dated August 13th, 2012, in the amount of $433,552.11. D, resolution approving the purchase of a new fire department command vehicle for the suburban purchasing cooperative. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
I move to approve the consent, John.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Assistant.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bultis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 7 and Item 8, I will read off, but if afterward I could have a motion to table until the Committee of the Whole. Resolution to include compensation directed into a retirement health savings account plan as IMRF earnings. Eight, resolution authorizing a permit for the use of the village as right away before noon on Sunday, August 19th, 2012, RDS Cycling Team and Club of Woodstock. Could I have a motion to table until after Committee of the Whole?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bultis.
Motion to table Items 7 and 8 until after the Committee of the Whole.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Second motion.
Questions or comments on tabling Items 7 and 8? Roll call, please.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bultis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 9, Village Clerk's Report.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. 10, unfinished business, none. 11, new business, none. Village Manager's Report.
Thank you, Hon. You have a few items this evening. I received this little brochure in the mail today, says, "You're invited, honoring our past, lighting our future." It's the Community Congregational Church, located at 410 South Cornell Avenue. They're having their 100th anniversary workshop, worship, and celebration Saturday, September 8th and Sunday, September 9th, and we're all invited. I did receive a couple of Comcast channel lineup changes. It appears that Cable Marketplace 2, channel on expanded, basic, channel 102 is changing, and so is channel 103, just so the board and the citizens are aware that that's taking place. Additionally, Comcast is changing prices on TV Japan, Art, TV 5, Mondi. Just wanted to update the board that the 2012 auction proceeds, so far, without the latest van expenditure or revenue sources, we've sold probably close to 15 automobiles, either from our fleet confiscated drug seizures or DUIs. The revenue from all those vehicles is $49,932.04. Just wanted to update the board on that. Yeah, no, I log the remiss if I didn't say that. Just want to let the board and citizens of Villa Park know that we have lots of wood chips, so if you're interested, please take some wood chips.
Take some wood chips.
They're located at 1440 South Ardmore, which is a fire station, 51 South Ardmore, and our Terrace Pond parking lot. So they're free, take all you want, and if you need more, we can probably dump them in your driveway. On a serious note, on July 29th, 2012, at approximately 11:23 a.m., Villa Park Police were dispatched to the 600 block of North Beerman for a dog bite incident. Upon arrival to the scene, the officer found an 11-year-old female victim who had apparent dog bite to her hand and scratches to her leg. The officer further observed a white poodle, which had been covered in blood and was deceased upon arrival. The victim reported that she was walking with her friend and the dog, friend's dog, when a neighbor's aggressive pit bull jumped over a backyard fence and attacked her friend's poodle. The victim was attacked and injured by the pit bull as she attempted to prevent the attack on the poodle. The poodle was killed during the attack. Board, I have talked to Attorney, Village Attorney Orr, to try to determine a measure that we can use to detour or assist a village in situations like this. Attorney Orr, would you like to expand possibly?
Yes. Unfortunately, depending on your point of view, the village is not authorized by law to prohibit any breed of dog. It's absolutely prohibited. We can never prohibit any breed of dog, no matter what history, no matter what you can show, the dog's tendencies or the nature of a particular breed. What we are going to submit to Manager Keener, in fact, I have a copy of it with me, which I will leave with him tonight, is an ordinance that would allow this village to look at dogs, licensed dogs, and determine the difference between a dog, a dangerous dog, and a vicious dog. So that after a hearing, if it's determined that a dog is vicious, i.e. there are chances, and there is a history that the dog has harmed someone or another dog, there are certain restrictions that the village may make. For example, the dog cannot be out in public without being under the authority of an adult, that the dog cannot be let outside without a leash, and a leash not to leave the property, and so forth. So I will be leaving a form of that with Manager tonight. We'll be studying it, we'll be looking at it at a workshop, and determine what we can do to add to our current village code, so that when these incidents occur, we can take whatever measure we're allowed by law to protect our citizenry and our pets.
Thank you. Thank you. When you're on, I do have a couple more items. While I was on vacation and I came back, I was, became aware that there was an article written on the, "Local Area Governments Receive Transparency Audit." And some time ago, probably maybe three months or so, our audit came in, and the village of Villa Park received an alarming grade of 41.1 out of 100, which is a grade of an F. After we received that a few months ago, staff and I reacted the very next day and made changes to the website. And some of the changes that we made was to ensure that there were email and phone numbers available for all staff and electeds, that our auditing measures were on the website, that our union contracts were all on the website, that our CAFers were easily found, compensation was easily found, and things of that. And so I believe during our next transparency audit, that will be obviously higher than a 41.1. I was on the phone with the agency today and have assembled an email that'll be going out tomorrow, that I have clicked on our website and taken the WWW HTTP site and listed it in my email, so that they can see that we've made improvements, Hon, or Board. Thank you. Thank you. One additional item I'd like to bring up, there's been some discussion in the last several weeks about the elimination of puppy mills. As a non-home rule community versus a home rule community, and trying to stop the sale of those, of the puppies or cats through the puppy mills, that as a non-home rule community, I've asked Attorney Orr to investigate what we could do to help our residents and folks that are asking for our assistance in the elimination of these, of the sale of cats and dogs through these puppy mills. And as a non-home rule, I believe Attorney Orr would like to expound on that.
There is very little we can do, again. And in this instance, we already have in our village code provisions mandating cleanliness, proper animal care. The only thing we were going to, and I'll be leaving a form of it that I've drafted for consideration and review of this board at the next workshop, is possibly adopting the Illinois Administrative Code and requiring any vendor of pets, as in pet stores, a state license, so that at least we can have a form of registration, a form of contacting the ownership in the event that it's a problem. Unfortunately, that's about as much as we can do, but we will do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Hon.
Thank you. You'll add one or two things, will you?
Yes, Hon.
All right, with that, we'll go to the Village Attorney's Report.
I'm tired of talking.
Okay. Trustee Bultis.
Just a couple things. I'd like to thank the Pride Commission for their work, which we saw part of, what they do tonight with their awards for the businesses beautification. And thank you for going out and looking at all those, all the places in town and the hard job they had of picking out pre-finalists. And I'd also like to thank all the people who were sworn in tonight for commissions, and thank you for your willingness to volunteer for Villa Park. It's much appreciated, and I know you'll enjoy every minute. Before I became a board member up here, I was on a commission, and it's a great experience, and your work is appreciated. So thank you very much for volunteering. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Trustee Taglia.
Just a couple things. I want to thank everybody who came out to Nashville Night Out. I'd like to thank the police chief and the fire chief, the village president, and our trustees who came to the event. It was a lot of fun, we had a dunk tank, so we got a little wet, but it was a good time. And then also, I wanted to mention the Friends of the Villa Park Pools, and that they had a very successful event, and I see that Jessica Walker is here tonight, so thank you very much for putting on such a great event for the community. And then again, I want to thank the new commissioners. Thank you for volunteering. Your work is very critical, and we thank you very much for your service. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Taglia. Trustee Davis.
I'm not sure.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Thank you. I have a few things tonight. First of all, I just wanted to pass along my condolences to the family affected by the recent dog attack, so just wanted to pass that along to you. Also, of course, thanks to everybody who gives their time and service through volunteerism. A lot of people tonight were sworn in, so looking forward to working with you all in some way, shape, or form as a commissioner. And then next up, I am seeking a number of updates. Manager Keener?
Yes.
If I could ask you for a few updates? First one is on North Park Mall. Although it doesn't look like on the outside, there's been some things happening behind the scenes with the mall, and I think it might be time to maybe give a report on that and let everybody know what's going on there.
Be happy to. I know the boards are aware, and staffs are aware, but maybe the residents and folks on TV this evening are not aware, but on a weekly basis, I meet with staff in my office and Director Yee of Economic Development meet weekly and talk about all sorts of economic development projects and the processes and what's taking place. And over probably, I don't know, maybe the last six weeks or so, we've really talked about North Park Mall and its condition and what's taking place, that it's in, I believe, I wouldn't say receivership, but Director Yee, would you like to expand maybe a little bit on North Park, for us all?
Yes. North Park Mall is currently in bankruptcy proceedings. The owners own not only this shopping center, but several other shopping centers and a building downtown. But this bankruptcy is part of a financial institution that they own, so includes credit card processing, and so it is part and parcel, part of this bankruptcy. So bankruptcy for this particular shopping center moves, even though it's a separate parcel, it moves in tandem with the bankruptcy for the greater financial institution that went bankrupt. So they're in the process of getting a clean title and getting things ready so that it will go up for auction probably in the next 30 or 60 days. And I'll keep the board apprised, the community apprised of what's happening. For those who aren't familiar, it's a 350, 3,000 square foot shopping center. It will be, it will be a challenge to whoever operates it, because way back in the day, it was a JCPenney, and I think the depths are something like 300 feet deep on the far east side of it. So very difficult to rent or lease it or get a tenant for it, because it's such a large parcel. The other tenants currently is the Villa Park Fruit Market and the Hobo, and then there's the Swakoparama, and then a variety of smaller tenants, too. I think I have pet supplies. So we're keeping track on it. I talked to the real estate consultant, which was hired by the bank trustee on a weekly basis.
Basically, this could present an interesting opportunity for the village.
It could present a redevelopment opportunity.
Yes.
I've had some people who have indicated interest, but of course, it all depends on the purchase price and the intricacies of the other interrelated bankruptcy proceedings.
Be interesting to see how this goes. Okay. Thank you on that one. Appreciate that update, and giving a little update to the residents. The next up is an update on what's happening with the empty lot at the corner of Lincoln Avenue and North Avenue. That's the site of, we thought Dunkin' Donuts was going to be built there, and just kind of wondering what's happening with that, and since it's been a little while since we've talked about that.
That one, there is a developer who has it under contract, and...
There is or isn't, I'm sorry.
There is. It's under contract, and this contract is, I want to say it's a six to eight month contract before he has to close on the property. And they had also, the developer had approached me and asked if there were any incentives for the property and the type of business that it is, and they're still doing their due diligence, they haven't gotten corporate approval. So it's a developer who worked with a retailer, and they, it is not finalized, there's still some negotiations, if you will. There's not, it's a contract due due diligence, it's not an actual contract to buy, and so this particular owner, I think, has been working with several people, but it hasn't solidified yet.
Okay. So the Dunkin' Donuts, maybe, maybe not?
That Dunkin' Donuts is definitely out.
Okay.
It went west elsewhere.
Okay. Well, it's good we have a piece of land that we can rebuild now, so.
Right. It's a great corner and, you know, just adjacent to Safari Land, for those who don't know where it is, but, you know, there's, it's always a challenge. People want a certain price for their property, and tenants or buyers or developers are very trying to negotiate a better price, so I think that's part of the issue right now.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then the... And then the next up, Manager Keener? Excuse me, President Colleton.
Sure.
Manager Keener, what's, do you have an update in regards to the demo of the house at two forty-six North Wisconsin? That's something else that we've been talking about a lot. It's a house that has had a lot of problems over the years and we're getting close to making something happen there, so the manager could give us an update on that as well?
Yes, thank you. Yes, at two forty-six North Wisconsin, I believe there was a fire in two thousand and eight, possibly two thousand and seven. At that time, the property owner walked away from the home and abandoned it, et cetera, and it became an eyesore. And it became one of the staff's projects to work with the homeowner or the bank, banking institution that was taking over the home to either remodel, rehab, or demolish the home. And right now, I think as of this morning, it's going to be demolished and the site will be cleared. And the banking institution actually took control of the home and is seeking a second bid for the demolition of that structure, which if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be in the next couple of weeks.
So, the demo date will be set and...
Yes.
And will the fire department by chance participate perhaps in a controlled burn slash training exercise out there?
Yes, I approached, I approached Chief Rukasnick about a, I'm not so sure about a controlled burn, but some extrication and things of that nature.
Okay. As long as we can use it for something.
And then we, we thought about the police department and using our, our dog, Eno, but it's kind of risky and we don't want to injure the dog, so the place has been abandoned for quite some time, but perfect for the firefighters.
Yes. So, thank you.
Say the dog with the firefighters?
Well, the firemen are, they've got a little more gear. I don't know about the fur, but, but that's good news as well. And there's other properties, there's other properties throughout the village that are slated for some sort of update, demo, whatever, and we'll continue to stay on top of those as well. Just a few other things. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out for the community bike ride. It was our fourth annual on August fourth. We had about between one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty participants and we had twenty-two sponsors. Al Stash, who's taking pictures in the back, was one of many people participating with our, our ride and just real exciting that we had twenty-two sponsors come out and participate and assist with this effort, which helps continue it to be a free event for, for our community. So, it was pretty exciting and if anybody's interested in participating on that, it's an ad hoc commission of the Environmental Concerns Commission. So, if anybody's interested in being a part of the bike ride planning, they can contact me at six three zero eight three four five zero three two and we'll get you involved. And then, National Night Out, thanks again for all the great efforts that went into that event. It was a lot of fun. It was fun watching my colleagues get dunked in the dunk tank. It was really interesting and just appreciate that. And of course, Lufkin Pool, the fundraiser on the eighth of August, that's what community is all about, seeing a group of residents come together and make quite an event happen, you know, on behalf of both of our pools in town. So, it was real exciting to, to be there and watch it unfold and, you know, I bet you're going to say something, Jess, so I'm not going to give all the details. I'm going to let you, let you give your report, but just really want to thank everybody for participating as well. So, with that, I am done. Thank you.
Trustee Ayala?
No report.
Manager Keener has one more addition.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, for the National Night Out, I'd like to thank our staff who did a wonderful job of, of helping me put it together since I was on vacation. So, Officer Connor from our police department did an outstanding job of getting the hot dogs and the buns from Target, actually. Director Yee helped with water, correct, from Sonic? That was fantastic. And of course, you know, the dunk tank also came from Officer Connor, but it did not come with folks to be dunked, so, you know. Thank you, Chief Rukasnick and Trustee Taglia and the village president, Colleton. You know, I was going to join you, but hey, I was out of time.
He's on vacation right now.
So, but thank you, staff. It's awesome. And heard a lot of good things about it and hopefully we can, we'll do that again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I've got a couple of comments. I want to echo the sentiments on National Night Out. It was a very good time. I ended up visiting all seven of the block parties that went on as well throughout town, ended at Lufkin Pool with the southwest side Neighborhood Watch crew, but hit all the ones in between and the town has some absolutely excellent barbecue, some wonderful residents, root beer floats at one of them, so it was, but it was very nice to see all the Neighborhood Watch captains be able to bring their neighborhoods out and talk about essentially what National Night Out is about and what Neighborhood Watch is about, watching each other's backs. If you don't have a Neighborhood Watch, you can get one. It's free to start. Call the police station, Kevin Connor will come out, he'll set up a meeting, sit down with you and your neighbors, talk about what you need to do to watch each other's back and take care of each other. And that's what we're about here and that's what we need to be. The police can't be everywhere, so the more you can get involved with paying attention to what your neighbors do, the better off we all will be. Willowbrook High School, second annual black and blue game, August seventeenth. Action begins at five. Five o'clock is the sophomore scrimmage. Six o'clock is the alumni flag football game. Chris Ayala, you playing in that?
They're afraid of me, they won't.
Oh, okay. Well, Chris is a, is a former Willowbrook football warrior, so I, I thought maybe we could go see him run speedily up and down the field, correct?
Briefly.
Briefly. At six fifty-five zero, Willowbrook cheer performance. Seven o'clock, youth football and cheer introduction. Seven twenty-five, Willowbrook Palm performance. Seven thirty, varsity scrimmage. Willowbrook High School has done a tremendous job. They have improved consistently. The high school has improved their field. They've improved. The fieldhouse is fantastic. The high school is really gearing up and, and if we can support Willowbrook, I think it makes our community better, makes our town better. I know a lot of people move out to the suburbs for the sole purpose of the schools, so let's make sure we're supporting them and make sure we're part of them. With that, I went to the pool outing as well. It was a great time. It was a little cold for me to jump in, but my kids had no problem diving right in and getting out and shaking and going, where's our towels? But it was very well attended, great event, was very glad to be a part of it. And then I also wanted to say thank you to, to the Islamic Foundation. On Friday, they invited myself and many other local elected officials, Kirk Dillard, Michael LaDon from County Board Two, Leslie Coolidge, candidate for Congress. All were at the Islamic Foundation for their Ramadan festivity, which they bring many people throughout the community to at least share and get an idea of what they're doing there and, and what they're, what they're all about. So, thank you to them. And with that, we will go to public comments on non-agenda items. And if you please, come up there, just state your name. There is a sign-in sheet or there should be a sign-in sheet if you can put it... There, you need a pen? Okay. Hold on. There we go. See? Have you just signed your name? That way we have it for the clerk's record.
Sure. Okay. My name's Jessica Walker and I live at eight thirty-eight South Summit and I'm here representing the Friends of Villa Park Pools and I just wanted to give you a brief update on what's been going on. We, so far, we've had two meetings and I just want to say thank you so much to Trustee Taglia, Mr. Keener, and Trustee Buligal, who have come to our, our meetings and given a lot of support, helped me answer many questions through this whole process and, and also thank you, the three of you, along with Mr. Colleton, for coming to the fundraiser. I really appreciate it. It was a very good time. We had over about, about a hundred and seventy-five people that came. Not, not bad for a three weeks notice of a pool party happening at Lufkin. And so, since we, since July sixteenth, I think, when we discussed about when the, the report was given out about the pools, we developed this group called Friends of Villa Park Pools and we are talking about ways that we can plan for the future for Jefferson and Lufkin Pools. So, we are in the process of applying for a five oh one three C and so, we're just collecting the newspaper articles and supporting letters and things like that that we need for the application, but their next meeting is until October. So, instead of waiting until that was done, we started to act now while it's summer because obviously a lot of people are, pool is on your mind when it's hot out, not like today. So, anyway, so we had this fundraiser event and we've already started planning, we're going to have a booth at the Oktoberfest, let the residents know what's going on with the pools. I know after Labor Day, Marlin said that he's going to have the engineers come up to the pools and then he's going to let some of us from the Friends of Villa Park Pools Committee be there too with the engineers to explain everything to everybody. And at the party, my dad, who's been a resident for, I don't know, over twenty years, said to me, he's never been to Lufkin Pool. So, I invite any of you that have not been to Lufkin or Jefferson Pool, before they close over Labor Day weekend, please go there and see all the people that are enjoying the pools, see the situation that we're in, see what they look like, how, you know, what the facility, everything's going on with the people there, because I have a feeling that after the engineers come in Labor Day, after Labor Day, that we'll be talking a lot about this. And so, I just want everyone to know, you know, what we're talking about. So, I was glad that my dad pointed that out to me. But I also want to say that for the party, Dominix had donated twelve pizzas and Sonic had donated food. So, it was ten dollars per person, twenty dollars per family. And included in that was, we had some boys who graduated from Willowbrook High School, volunteered as a DJ, B and K Spin Masters is their name. And we had the Sonic and Dominix donated food. We had an amazing silent auction. I cannot list all of the names of the people that donated things for the silent auction. It's on our Facebook page, which is Friends of Villa Park Pools. Please go on it and has lots of information. And Greg Gola also has been a great help coming to the meetings and answering all of my questions. And then we hope to have some type of open gym nights in the fall at maybe either Willowbrook or Jefferson or Jackson Junior High for the kids, just to get, again, just to get the word out and stuff. But anyway, getting back to the fundraiser, we raised over, over twenty-eight hundred dollars at night and that money is going to go into the five oh one three C. So, that money will not be used for yearly maintenance of the pool. That money will be used for the big, the future planning of the pool. So, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the Villa Park Board, my name's Dwayne Poland. I'm one of the owners of the Ardmore Lounge here in Villa Park and I would like to ask for a change in the village liquor ordinance for Sundays to open instead of at noon to be eleven o'clock AM. This will make Villa Park competitive with Lombard and Almhurst and with the places for eating tax that Villa Park has, it will also generate more revenue. And that's all that I have to ask.
And I would imagine Dwayne'd probably sooner rather than later since football season is coming up, correct?
It's coming around. That, that would be helpful.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sure we'll bring it up and we'll take it up with the board.
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to read something from the, I'm John Barsati. I live on Villa Avenue in Villa Park. I'd like to read something from the Freedom of Information Act. All persons are entitled to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts and policies of those who represent them as public officials and public employees. Such access is necessary to enable the people to fulfill their duties of discussing public issues fully and freely. Access to public records promotes transparency and accountability of public bodies at all levels of government. Also, there is a presumption in the Freedom of Information Act that all records in the custody or possession of a public body are presumed to be open to inspection or copying. Back in April of two thousand and eleven, I applied under Freedom of Information Act for some information from the village here. We went back and forth on understanding what it was that I wanted. I was denied those records, some of the records. I subsequently filed a, a review with the public assessor counselor of the Attorney General's office and it was determined that the village should indeed open some records up to me. I have since tried to get access to those records and I haven't been able to get that. Either there's some miscommunication involved or someone doesn't know how to apply the Freedom of Information Act. So, I'm, I'd like to invite Mr. President especially and two of the trustees to come with me in a next meeting with the village people, uh, staff, to discuss and see if I can get these records.
I'll go with you, Mr. Barsati. I think we can only have one other member or else it would be an illegal, and it would be an illegal meeting. So, it can only be one other member. But I'll be more than happy, I'll be more than happy to go with you, Mr. Barsati.
So, can we set a date? You already had a question? You have a...
John, let me give you my cell number. You call me and we'll set a date. If that works. Remember, I got a work schedule though, too. Here, John, before you leave, wait. Don't leave, I'll be right down my cell.
So, I subsequently filed that review and subsequently also then decided to file a complaint, a court action against the village, asking for, seeking declaratory and adjunctive relief. The attorney, the village attorney who came to the, to the, to the proceedings and I discussed some things, I got the impression that I was going to be getting this information. I still haven't gotten it. Any questions from the board?
At this point, I'll go with you, I'll go with you to, to figure it out. We'll get it done.
I hope so, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Here, John, before you leave. Don't spread this all around. Keep that for you. Thank you, Mr. Barsati.
No other options. I'm exhausted, no other options.
Thank you, Mr. Barsati.
Thank you.
Ozana, John Squido, S Q U O, North Lincoln Avenue. Couple different things. Nobody else behind me, but I just want to start off by saying the Kiwanis concerts on the Prairie Path, how much I enjoy them. Whoever picks the talent, just outstanding, it gets better and bigger. Stingrays are great. Generation was fantastic. We could do these a couple of times a week. I think it'd be a lot nicer one day a week, but a couple of different subjects. I heard something mentioned about possible breed specific legislation. Any, any board members, village manager, town, I'll be happy to provide you with information about BSL that you're talking about, how it does not work. Every dog's an individual. You need to enforce your existing dog laws, restraint laws, leash laws, barking laws to promote proper dog behavior. Dog confrontations will happen. I'm going to have to begin for many breeds, including the bully breeds. Medical research on dogs saved my life over thirty years ago. There's a lot of misconceptions out there. Properly identifying any type of dog, a breed, is virtually impossible by looking at them. The term pit bull type gets thrown around as a fear of monitoring.
Well, and I think, and I think the attorney, when she expressed and stated that we're not looking at taking any breeds, what we're looking at is, is quantifying if a dog has attacked or will attack, that it becomes now a vicious...
Exactly, which is already covered by your animal control. That's, that's what I'm saying. I just want everybody to be aware, so that everybody, and I understood what she said.
Okay.
But this is very important to me and myself and hundreds of thousands of people around the world are, are fighting this and we're making strides and it's very important that responsible dog ownership, anybody will tell you the owner's defining factor in this and it's very important that this doesn't happen. Very important to me and I want everybody, if you, anybody, I'll provide you with all the information, misconceptions out there, okay? This is a big part of what I do and anybody wants to take me up on it, I'll have some time in the next couple of weeks so that, you know, it's a terrible thing, but dogs have prey drive and things happen. And you need to restrain your animals and the term that they use in the paper just to scare people is a huge misconception because these dogs are American Temperament Society, they rank third with all the other dogs. And please, do your research and understand that, don't believe what you read in the paper and, you know, it's hard for police to identify any type of dog, but I'll be happy to talk to anybody about it and, you know.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Taglia just purchased a dog recently, beautiful pup and it's a Labrador and... I know Mr. Taglia just purchased a dog recently, beautiful pup, and it's a Labrador and trust me, I have statistics on Labradors. I've had some and Ozana met my, my pity, my pity rotting, and she knows, she knows what he's like. He's very hot dog aggressive, other than that. On that, uh, one more thing. I attended the, uh, Windy City Pet Expo at the Odeon last month in July and I got to, and by the way, there was over a hundred sort of so bully breeds in that building. Beautiful, beautiful scene. Came to see Shorty Rossi, I'd thank the Odeon for doing that. It was a lot of fun. I got to talking to some people and I wanted to ask a favor of my fire chief. Um, we got discussing about, uh, animal respiratory devices for fire victims. As you know, they make these for humans. They have them for, for companion animals also. And this is taking off on the East Coast. I don't think I need the board's approval to, uh, help you with this. I would actually be willing to purchase the initial devices. They're not that expensive, but I don't know if you're equipped with them or not. It seems like on the East Coast, none of the departments are equipped, but they fit over animals. They're similar to what veterinary facilities use.
Is it oxygen masks?
Yeah, it's just, there's three different sizes. So you already have them, okay. Okay, are they on everyone? Or just, I want, so you do have them, right?
I believe we do. We have four, one of each animals.
That's great, I did not know that, okay.
I'll make sure, I'll, I'll check on what we do.
Some pretty interesting footage out there on YouTube and, uh...
John, will you make sure you give the chief your information so he can get in touch with you?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Beautiful. Cause I wanna make sure you get the answer on it and we get the right, we get the right information to it.
I didn't even know they existed and, and we got discussing about it and a couple of other people there were gonna present them to, uh, some villages in the area and I thought that was a pretty cool idea, so.
It is.
As you know, our companion animals are protected by every law that human beings are, so just something dear to me and, uh, makes a big difference if we could do that.
Thank you, John.
I wanna talk to you about these things, okay? So I'll be available next few weeks.
Be more than happy to, John.
I'll be at the meeting next week, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Cutter. Um, I am the owner of the dog that was attacked. Um, so I did want to, and also the mother of the child that had to see it all. Um, so I did wanna address the situation, um, definitely not regarding breeds or isolating any breeds, cause that is absolutely not what this is about. Um, my biggest problem is, number one, that the dog's still there and there are three doors down from a park. Um, the two kids that witnessed it, they have to live next door to this dog. Um, we live a block down. I won't allow my daughter to go to the park, cause she has to pass by that house. Um, it's not fair that, you know, this dog killed my dog, lunged at my daughter, bit a kid, and we have to, we, we have to stay in our houses and this dog can be out. The next day, the guy had the dog out without a leash on. The dog jumped the fence, so obviously the fence is not keeping it confined. I did look up state laws and ordinances and DuPage County laws, and one of them said that once a dog is determined, and I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, once the dog is either determined vicious or dangerous, that, um, it does have to be in a confined enclosure and that the enclosure must be, uh, six feet tall. From what, I can't remember if it's Illinois or DuPage County though, but it does state that and that fence is not six feet tall. It is definitely not proper to keep that dog enclosed in that. There was an order made that, that, the guy has, the owner has to have the dog on the leash even on his own property. Um, and unleashed and muzzled when off the property. Um, unfortunately though, I, I don't trust him. Um, he hasn't obeyed the law so far. The dog didn't have village tags, the dog didn't have rabies tags. Um, he watched the whole thing happen. Um, so I need some help and what I can do, especially since the enclosure isn't proper, um, I, I don't think that we should just leave it up to this owner who's completely, um, irresponsible. Uh, he has two adult pit bulls and twelve puppies locked in a garage all day and all night. Uh, he, and then he lets them out and then they run wild and that's when they go crazy. Um, I've let many people know, I've contacted the Humane Society, Animal Control, um, nobody seems to want to do anything about it. So I need some help from the village as far as at least getting some help, number one, for these dogs, because honestly, I blame the owner. Um, and number two, for, I mean, if he's allowed to keep this dog, then we need to enforce any laws that are available to help the rest of the neighborhood. There's too many little kids and dogs and people walking around for this guy to be allowed to just keep this dog. I, I just don't think it's fair. So I'd like to see both things happen as far as, and also limitations on how many dogs can be kept in a household and, uh, how you care for your dogs. Um, one of the things is, uh, um, you know, one of the things said that, um, the animal control, uh, and welfare laws stated that, you know, you have to keep animals confined in an enclosure that allows for adequate exercise, uh, or on a swivel-based chain, no shorter than twelve feet in length. Uh, your dog must not be left tied out if you're not home. Tying or chaining for long periods of time leads to aggression due to frustration animals encounter in this situation. I think the same applies for being locked in a garage. A garage is definitely not enough space for two adult dogs and twelve puppies to get adequate exercise. And if this guy, now he's limited to keeping this dog on a leash because it's declared dangerous, so now where, where does this dog get exercise from? It's just going to continue to get aggressive. I'm just looking out for the kids in the neighborhood really is my main concern, because there's too many kids.
Oh, Julie, I agree and you and I had chatted on, uh, through email back and forth. Um, and what I'd like is, uh, if, uh, we could have the village manager sit down with you to, uh, so we can make sure we have all that taken care of.
Definitely.
Um, and the village manager would probably be best to, to handle that, bring the police chief in and the attorneys in with it as well for that conversation.
And if there's any trustees that would be available to help me go to the county level to try and make some changes to laws, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to, uh, make this so nobody else has to go through this. This has been pretty stressful.
We have, uh, actually our newest, uh, our newest county board member trustee, or county board member, LaDon, uh, who's in there for a very short time, so he's not even seeking reelection, cause he's just an appointee. So he, uh, I, I can put you in touch with him and, uh, if you'd like, the three of us can sit down and we could see if, uh, board member LaDon would be, somebody would be a good partner. Plus he lives about two blocks away in Lombard.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, thank you.
Sure. And Julie, before you leave, you know what? I, I think I've got all your information. I can give it to the manager. He'll call you in the morning, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Shepherd, Mich, uh, North Michigan Avenue. First of all, no such thing as a bad dog, just a bad owner, but that isn't why I'm up here.
I'd like to see if there's an update on, uh, Michigan Avenue and the progress of North Michigan Avenue.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yes, there is progress on, uh, the, uh, North Michigan Avenue, uh, construction. In fact, uh, within the next few weeks, we will be bringing, uh, additional contract to the board for consideration for the remainder of the design for Michigan Avenue. Um, we've already did the topo, we've already did the soil, uh, borings, um, we've got partway design, we've taken a look at, um, the separation of stormwater and sewer. We believe half the roadway can be separated. Um, we believe the road is going to be a total reconstruction now. Um, and that alone will probably force it to be a spring project. Public Works Director, uh, Justus, would you like to add anything to that brief update?
Uh, first of all, that was an excellent summary. Uh, the only thing I would add is, uh, the reason why we're going towards the reconstruct is by the time you're done replacing the curb, patching all the trenches, all, all the bad, uh, uh, subbase material, the difference between the resurfacing and the reconstruct was only about forty thousand dollars. So it's, it's really not worth patching it together. So we're gonna go ahead with the full reconstruct, which means we now have to look at the underground sewers, do we need to add some fire hydrants and some other things? So, uh, we're gonna wrap that up into a, a full design contract, uh, with the plan of going out to bids in, in January and start construction first thing in the spring.
Thank you. Thank you, Vitas. And the next thing I'd like is going out for bid in January, starting first frigging, uh, third, first thing in spring. Um, what can change that between now and spring? I know some trustees are up for reelection and if they're not here, can the trustees reverse everything that has transpired? A new board? Possibly, but if it starts in spring, uh, new, new board members wouldn't take office until May. So if it starts in March, it, nobody's gonna get up and stop a project halfway through.
So can you start it in March or April?
So that's where we're going with that question. I got you, Scott.
Well, you know, everything winds up being politics and our whole street is the way it is because of politics, because of the good old boys' club that used to be and I can go on and on about my theories on it, but it's irrelevant. I just don't wanna see politics change something that I've been trying to get done for seven years now and somebody actually looked at it, finally did, you know, had surveyors come out and core samples done. So what I've been hearing over the last six, seven years was complete BS. That's the way I feel, so. But next thing, uh, now, keeping up on streets, um, can we do anything about, uh, what we call the Villa Park Paving Company? In other words, uh, cold patching? That's what we call it. It's the worst. Lombard goes out, they have preventive maintenance where they pour tar into cracks and everything else. We don't. Uh, trustee Taglia's street started getting bad, which is only ten years old. When did they do that? Two thousand? Something like that. And it had some score marks from, from the, uh, uh, plows and everything. They tried to cold patch that. I mean, it's, wasn't even a hole. Now it's a bump. But, I mean, our street is one big cold patch. That's all that's ever been done to it. Uh, they, we don't have a program to properly patch streets. There's a spot right over on, uh, Addison Road, right, as you turn the corner, right after they did that street, they had to dig up a sewer. Well, it still isn't patched right. It's still a big divot, a hole, and it's a brand-new street. You know, I mean, I like our guys, our workers, like I said, our tree guys do a fabulous job at removing trees safely and efficiently and stuff like that, but I don't see that we have anybody that really knows about road patching. And I know there was a referendum out to get reconstruction done on all, a bunch of streets. I voted for it, unfortunately, other people didn't. Um, what can we do, you know? There's other streets other than mine that need to be done. Kenilworth, there's, uh, places, you know, I hear about other people complaining about theirs and I go, look at them, and yeah, they're, they're getting bad, but they don't last. Once they start going, they go really fast. But, uh, what can we do about future? I know you've got sales tax going towards maintenance and stuff like that, but it's actually repairing the potholes properly is what, uh, I'm more concerned with and proper maintenance of the streets in the future. You know, I, I don't care if you put, give me a fifty-dollar, you know, uh, city sticker, I don't care what you need to do to get the money, but I know to have full-time crew, it's gonna cost money. But, uh, I guess what study can be done to see how many people we need and how much money we need? That's what I'd like to ask. If anybody's ever done that?
Well, I think what you may find, Scott, is, uh, the board has talked about it. We may go back to another referendum to try, uh, and, uh, possibly frame it differently, possibly, uh, you know, we, we gave a lot of information for the two that we ran when I first became president. Uh, if we do it again, we will probably attack it a little differently. Uh, we'll garner far more support from residents such as yourself to come out and help us, uh, talk to people, explain to people the situations that goes on and where the dollars go to. So I, I think a lot of it's going to be education if we go to a road referendum again, uh, and then it'll be up to the board if they wanna put one, if they would like to put it up as well. Peter, any, any other, uh, comments?
Well, I think to address, uh, some of your concerns, I'll certainly take a look at the Internal Department to see who we have doing cold patching, et cetera. Um, I know as staff, we've been reaching out to area municipalities to share services and there might be an opportunity that maybe somebody has a patching machine that we could, that we could borrow and exchange maybe our jetter for a couple of days, something like that. So we're always looking to share services for road construction, uh, and, uh, and other activities also. So that might be something that we could do.
Seven years ago, when I first brought the petition, uh, to the board, it was about seven years ago, I think, um, manager Nieman came out, he had some of the really bad sections saw cut and properly patched. Unfortunately, the street's so bad, they're, those patches are pretty much gone now, but, you know, they had the, the little steamroller and, you know, the grinder and everything else. They had little ones or they rented them or something, but somebody did it, you know, but I don't see enough of that being done. I see more of, I've, I've got friends that do asphalt and concrete and when I asked them about cold patching, they said, cold patching is meant for a reason. In the middle of winter, you got a hole, you go out, you fill it, but in the spring, you go out and you properly cut it out and properly patch it. It's the only way to fill a hole. And, uh, you know, I'd just like to see our maintenance get better because, uh, reconstructing streets costs more than everybody knows. I mean, it's better to maintain something on your house than rather wait until it goes and now it's, you know, something's fallen down. So it's the same way with streets. And I, I don't care about taxes if they're going in my town. I got a problem with everything going outside this town and I know my, looking at my property bill, not much of it goes to this village. So, I mean, and that's what I think residents need to understand. I don't have kids in high school or grammar school, so, you know, almost four thousand dollars of my tax bill goes to the schools, nothing to the village. But, you know, do what you gotta do to, you know, keep our streets done. I want, my tax money stays in this village, I'm happier, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? With that, we will go on to committee of the whole.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen. Oh, sorry. Sixteen, consider executive session, RA five ILCS, C one Personnel Matters and Collective Bargaining, five ILCS one twenty slash two, C five litigation, five ILCS one twenty slash two, C eleven Purchase or Lease of Real Property for the Public Body, and five ILCS one twenty slash two, C twenty-eight meetings between internal or external auditors and governmental audit committees, finance committees and their equivalents. I have a motion on item sixteen.
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayalo.
Move to consider the executive session.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
I second the motion.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayalo.
Yes.
Trustee Bullfist.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
No.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Pressy Colleton.
Yes. Item seventeen, now recess to committee of whole. August thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, agenda, committee of the whole, one, consider a resolution authorizing a permit for the use of the villages right away before noon on Sunday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, RDS Cycling Team and Club of Woodstock. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff is, staff is working with RDS Cycling Team and Club of Woodstock, Illinois to bring a grand prix bicycle race to Villa Park on Sunday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Article twenty-one, section twenty-one hyphen four oh two of the Village of Villa Park Municipal Code does not allow the issuance of a permit for parades or open meetings before noon on Sundays without the approval of the corporate authorities. Staff requests that the village board approve the resolution so that the permit may be issued in the grand prix bicycle race, may I correct? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
President, I'm sorry.
Sorry, trustee Bullwinkle.
Manager Keener, um, what will be the timeframe of this event and, um, you kind of expound a little bit more on the location of the event and what the residents can expect in terms of road closures and just kind of a little more detail on the event itself?
Sure.
And maybe a little bit of history too, cause this isn't the first time we've had this event come to Villa Park, so.
That is correct. Um, I believe back in two thousand and one, two and three, um, the club held, uh, racing event in the Village of Villa Park. So it's been... So, it's been some time since the last event was held here in the village. This time, the event is on Sunday, the nineteenth, and the race director wishes to start around, probably racing about eight-thirty or nine o'clock. They want to have everything assembled in their event areas, such as hay bales in case there's an accident. On the track, we'll have medics, they may get called away, so we may have to work with that, excuse me. We'll have police or the explorers at certain corners, for every corner, to make sure that traffic doesn't enter. The residents will be notified tomorrow if it's approved tonight, and Wednesday via letter or just going from door to door notifying them that of the race time, that they probably have to get their errands out of the way early because it may be difficult, or they won't be able to get out of their driveways because of the cyclists. The cyclists will be going pretty close to thirty miles an hour. I call it a criterion, and there's probably seven to eight different groups of races. The race director expects close to a hundred and fifty entrants. It is a national or international sanctioned race, so it's quite an honor to have it in Villa Park. The race director does have sponsors, including MCC, our motorcycle business that we have here that recently expanded and relocated. So, it's going to be a unique event where awards will be giving, or given, and sponsors will be given some display space, et cetera, things of that nature. The course did change a little bit. The race director wanted to go down part of Michigan. Michigan is probably not conducive for a bike cyclist going thirty miles an hour, so we decided to make an adjustment. In the route, I don't have to have my map with me.
It's primarily on the south side, right around.
Yeah. Chief, is it that? Bob?
Trustees, the route is, begins around Park and Yale. Goes west on Park to Wisconsin, south on Wisconsin to Woodrow, comes back east on Woodrow to Harvard, south on Harvard to Washington, east on Washington to Princeton, and then north on Princeton to Park where it turns a corner and hits the finish line. There are multiple events, and our plan, Mr. Keener, if you don't mind, our plan from a police control issue is, got flyers, if approved by the board, I got a flyer all queued up to be hand-delivered to all the houses affected tomorrow. And again, on Friday, I want to make sure everybody knows, fielded one call from a resident today, and I said, if you can get your car out early, park in a block away, you're golden, won't be a problem. But what we do from a control standpoint is, when the race finishes, we can radio the, all the points on the course where our police personnel are and say, okay, race is over. People can come and go, get in, get out. Ten, fifteen minutes later, okay, close it up again, start another heat. And that's kind of the way it's going to go, starting at about, the first race schedule start at nine o'clock, anticipate being done around four. So, it's intermittent between nine and four, but if you're on one of those streets, and you'll get a letter on it tomorrow if the board approves the permit, it'll tell you that you're going to be inconvenienced for a day for a big community event like we are sometimes, with all street closures on community events.
Will this impact the French market?
Only maybe from a good standpoint, because the two events will be side-by-side to each other, maybe some synergy.
But the residents could get to the French market, you know?
Yes.
Okay. Certainly walkable, but some people drive.
Certainly walkable. Weather's going to be perfect, as the event planner says, the weather's going to be golden that day. He promised.
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Two things. Are they coming with their own liability insurance, and who's paying for all our staff and equipment?
Yes, they have been jumping through a lot of hoops for the insurance, at least probably four different insurance policies, and the last one they attained was for the village. So, they do have their necessary insurance. For the staff, we're going to try to use minimal police. I suggested to the police chief, maybe one, two officers, and try to use explorers or CPA to do the rest. I'll be on-site trying to help myself. For the fire, I suggested just using the medics, if they have to go, they have to go. We'll have to take a look at that, because going thirty miles an hour on the bike, if they do have an accident, they probably will be in the way of future riders coming around the corners, coming on a straightaway, so they may get hit again. So, we're going to take a look at that. The village will absorb the cost for those two things, and probably placing some barricades out, and that's it, off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Consensus?
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
No.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Item two, Consider a Resolution to Include Compensation Directed into Retirement Health Savings Account Plan as IMRF Earnings. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. In January twenty thirteen, a health savings account plan will be presented to employees with a tax-exempt contribution allowance. For individuals that participate in IMRF, it is recommended that the Village of Villa Park adopt a resolution to include compensation directed into the health savings plan as IMRF earnings. These earnings are then qualified to be used in employee-defying benefit plan pension. No additional cost in this fiscal year will be incurred since total salaries were used in budgeting IMRF calculation for fiscal year twenty thirteen. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item three, Consider Engineering Agreement with Clark Dees Engineers for Phase Two Engineering Services for Road Improvements in the North Avenue and Ovaltine Tiff Areas. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. The village proposes Tiff-funded street improvements in two areas of the village. The first is a triangular industrial area near North Avenue. The second includes Ovaltine Court and Alley as a portion of Wildwood Avenue. Public Works staff proposes an agreement with Clark Dees Engineers to provide Phase Two Design Engineering Services for these improvements at a cost of sixty-one thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Construction would take place in spring of twenty thirteen. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board?
Yes, President Colleton.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Manager Keener.
Yes.
I trust that there's more than enough funds in the Tiff to cover this?
Yes.
So, we won't be depleting. We won't come anywhere near it.
Any other questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item four, Consider An Ordinance Amending the Annual Budget for the Village of Villa Park for the Fiscal Year Commencing on May first, two thousand twelve, and Ending on April thirty, two thousand thirteen. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. To better track expenses and revenues during the course of the current fiscal year, staff is introducing a proposed budget amendment on periodic basis rather than annually. Budget Amendment Number One proposes to authorize thirty-five thousand from the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the fire department. A two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities is required to approve an ordinance for the proposed changes. Thank you, Your Honor.
Questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item five, Consider a Resolution Approving a License Agreement for a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way Between the Village of Villa Park and the Owner of Ten Forty-eight South Summit Avenue, Villa Park, Illinois. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. The property owner of Ten Forty-eight South Summit Avenue wishes to install a privacy fence in a vacant public alley. A license agreement would be needed to grant the property owner permission for the proposed construction and maintenance of the fence. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public?
I have a couple of questions. Twenty-five years ago, or twenty-three years ago.
Excuse me, please identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Pam Altman, and I am the owner of the property at Ten Forty-eight South Summit. About twenty-three years ago, I tried to purchase the lot behind me, and at the time, I was told that everybody on the block needed to purchase the right-of-way, which I could understand, that being. So, I never did anything with it, because some of the people on the block were older, and they didn't want to do it. So, now I have decided that maybe I could lease it and call to get information to lease the piece of property. And I was told, even if I want to buy it, that there's water running underneath there. So, I don't understand why I could have bought it before and I can't now, other than the fact that there's water. But I wanted to put a fence up on it, and if there's water underneath there, I'd still be able to do that, is question one. And question two is, there's a ComEd pole back there, and I do realize that I'd need to give access to ComEd for the pole, and I'm willing to do like whatever U-type fence to leave the pole free for ComEd. But would I be liable by signing this, and obviously, you know, it's my property, or, you know, leased property now, if something happened to the ComEd man on that pole, am I liable?
You're not interfering with the ComEd pole, nor are you interfering with the water main. The problem is, if Commonwealth Edison or the village has to get to the water main and/or the pole, your fence could be harmed, and they're not responsible. The village isn't responsible to repair your fence.
And that's okay. I do understand that, and that's why I was looking at doing a, I don't know, whatever you call it, a squared U-type, to leave the pole open. But my concern was, we do have a pole in the backyard, and I have found numerous squirrels in my pool who keel over from hitting the electric, you know? So, my concern is that if the ComEd man was up there and got electrocuted, now I've leased this piece of property.
No, don't worry about it.
That was my concern. I've leased a piece of property, which let the village off.
And hopefully, the Commonwealth Edison is well-trained.
Well, I hope so, too, but accidents do happen.
You should be okay. Your fence may not be okay, but you should be okay.
So, I, this is something that, you know, I can do, is lease the piece of property and be able to.
But if there's need to get any of that, you could lose your fence.
Okay, and I'm assuming that I still need to follow village laws by taking a permit out for the fence?
Yes, please follow village laws.
You know I'm a law-abiding citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Balthus.
I heard the word a lot, lease this property. She's not leasing the property, she's getting a license to use it.
There is a legal difference.
Right. So, it's not a lease. It's still the village's property, we're just allowing you to use the property.
Yes, and I did understand, because it's ten dollars, so I do know, but I, and when I talked to Mr. Vasselli, he had used the word lease, so I'm sorry, I was the same.
I just want to make sure you understood.
No, I got it. But. I mean, I'm hoping that I could.
Well, that takes care of all your liability questions.
Right, but I'm hoping that if I put a fence and put a garden there, so I can grow some for me, in this academy, that one year later, you're not going to come back and tell me I have to take you down.
Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
If you might want to just check, I heard you say there's water underneath there. I don't know where you heard that from.
It's a water main.
Water main.
Water mains are, so, do you know where that water main is in relation to where the fence is going to go?
Well, in this set, we'll get Exhibit A, but there was no Exhibit A on here.
Right.
So, I didn't know. I was going to call Mr. Vasselli to ask, because if I can't put a fence there to extend and be able to put a garden or whatever back there.
Is it deep enough?
That's really what I was.
I have a half feet deep.
So, there's no ways? Okay.
The water main is deep enough.
All right.
I will be able to put that.
If you hit water, you know what happened. You also.
You can drill down a little bit, a whole stair.
Any other questions or comments for the board?
Thank you very much.
Consensus?
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item six, Consider a Resolution Approving a License Agreement for a Parking Facility Within the Public Right-of-Way Between the Village of Villa Park and the Owner of Three Fifty South Ardmore Avenue, Villa Park, Illinois. Manager Keener.
Thank you, Your Honor. The property owner at Three Fifty South Ardmore Avenue wishes to resurface this parking lot and a portion of the adjacent alley right-of-way. A license agreement would be needed to grant the property owner permission for the proposed construction, maintenance, and future use of the alley. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the public? Questions or comments for the board? Consensus, please?
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Balthus.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. All right, we will go back to item, advanced bill listing is not, we will reconvene to the formal agenda. Item seven, Resolution to Include Compensation Directed into a Retirement Health Savings Account, HSA Plan as IMRF Earnings. Can I have a motion for the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Move to approve the resolution.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Balthus.
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? I have a question, is this also included with fire and police salaries and pensions as well? Fire and police officers go into HSAs, or do they not have HSAs?
It's IMRF.
No.
Hi, the HSA is open to fire, police, and IMRF, but the way that the calculation is done for police and fire for their pension is completely different.
Okay.
So, IMRF requires, in order for these earnings to be included in their calculation, that they have to pass a resolution.
Okay.